The special meeting, the February 7th special meeting of the Mentor Board of Education is called to order. Mr. Wade, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Avlo.
Here.
Ms. Jessley. Mark absent. Ms. Marchesa.
Present.
Ms. Payne.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
She's calling.
Oh. Do you want me to call her?
Yeah.
Alright, so on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank Mr. Bennett for being with us tonight. And this evening, we're working towards creating that cohesive unified team that collaborates towards a common vision. Because highly effective boards are such for their governance mindset. And with two new members, we have a wonderful opportunity for our board to discuss norms and expectations around the way that we want to operate and communicate with each other and our stakeholders.
And just a couple of things, I know as we were getting this set up, we reached out for input on some of the topics that we would be discussing in kind of our board retreats. Based on some of that feedback, we're probably going to do this in kind of a two-pronged approach. So tonight will be really focusing on those norms, the roles, responsibilities, communication, you know, how we do some of that here as a group, really working on the team cohesion in this part. And then the second part, which we've been advised would probably be best with some legal advice and maybe having an advisor here for us with that would be revolving around some of the Robert's Rules, the Open Meetings Act, and the Sunshine Law pieces to the puzzle. So we'll kind of approach this from a two-pronged approach and hopefully we'll get some good results. So that's why we invited Russ. Russ comes to us from the ESE of Northeast Ohio. Been a superintendent in the past, been working with boards of education and really some leadership development at the ESE of Northeast Ohio for several years now. Some of our principals are actually going through some of his work with the principal leadership cohorts there at the ESE and you know, it just brings a lot of knowledge to the table here tonight.
Wow, wealth of knowledge.
Looking forward to his work with us here this evening. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bennett to get us started.
Well, good. Well, thanks for having me here. There's a portion of tonight that I'll kind of talk, a little more talking, but then there'll be another portion which I will just facilitate and hopefully you will have more dialogue because I think it's important to kind of create your own norms, how you want to work together and so forth. So the stuff that I've kind of put together is, again, it's, you'll see in the very beginning, it's going to be more of the roles, responsibilities, that kind of stuff. And then I'll get, I have some policies that you have, we'll talk about communication, which I think is the huge, biggest part of it. Sorry, but I do have, I'm almost over the cold thing, I've been dealing with it, but it's over. But I shouldn't be in my medicine, so I shouldn't be contagious, I hope, but.
Rose, last month, it's the microphone. We fixed that part, but now we've.
See, here shortly, I have six grandkids and we stayed at our house most of the time. So you know what they're going through.
Yeah.
Can't help it. So again, I'm going to, let me just pass this stuff out to you. And just to kind of give you an idea, I've done quite a few of these, I've already done five already this year. I've got one tonight, I've got one Saturday, I've got one next Saturday. So I do quite a few of these for boards. And one of your responsibilities as a board is actually to orient the board members. So I'll probably talk a little bit more, you know, I don't know how veteran everybody is, I just know Jenny is the most veteran, just because I remember back in the day working with that. And so there'll be some times that, you know, we'll share some things, maybe do an old. So this, what looks like a PowerPoint is, I'm not PowerPointing you, it's really more of an agenda for me to go through. And it's note-taking kind of thing if you want. There's some stuff on the right-hand side, which I'll get to in times, in time here. But really, what I want to first is actually look at slide number two. Okay, what do you want the mentor schools to look like, really? What do we want for them? You know, and really, there's a purpose for having the house that's out on the water next, because I like water. You know, it's where my piece is. But if you notice that, there's that path going out, which are, you know, symbolism here, right? Just humor me a minute here, I think that symbolism going out on our journey for those kids, right? And that journey really starts with leadership, right? With your part of it, and also leadership here of seven that are here with the board and then the superintendent and treasurer. But also, we have here calm waters, right? There'll always be ripples, but the concept here is really how do we create calm waters? Because we know when people work together, we can get more accomplished, right? That's really what the goal is. And we've got kids, and that's, as you see the Y, as I just talked about my six grandkids, there they are. It's the cousin crew. And I'm going to talk a little bit about, you can see where my lens is going to come from. And then I'm going to go and ask everybody here, kind of like, what's your why? Why do you want to be here? And what do you want maybe to accomplish and so forth? But I'm all about kids. You know, my purpose for everything I've done is about kids, student achievement, making sure that they're taken care of. I have three boys, and I've got six granddaughters. I don't know how that all worked, but they're all different. And all of them are different, and I can already tell you which one's going to be off-the-chart smart. I can tell you which one's going to be the stinker in school, right? The one that's going to be in the plays. You know, you can start seeing these develop. And I think the piece is, hi Jenny.
Hi, how are you?
Good. It's, when I was a principal, was a teacher, then a superintendent for 10 years in Aurora when I retired, everything you do is focused on kids. And that's really where, and if we can focus on kids and what they need, and kids versus adult behavior, you know, we can accomplish great things. That's my lens. So what I come back to, if I, if I step on a toe here, you know why I'm stepping on it? Because I'm going to be pushing towards kids. And they're all different, and you have 7,000 kids here or so, right, in the district? And they're all your kids. They come from different homes, they come from different beliefs, they come from different races, genders, whatever, but they're all your kids. And they're entrusted, your community's entrusted in you to take good care of them. And really, so that's kind of, as I think about today, that's really the North Star. How do we work together to take care of those kids? And that's my why, so you know where I come from. So we're just going to go around the room, Rose, you're fortunately sitting next to me, so you're going to be first. And kind of share your why, or why you might be wanting to be on the board and so forth.
My why is my kids, and kids in general. You know, I, my youngest is in second grade, and I would like to see her stay and continue to flourish in the district. And I, we built a house here, we planted down, you know, roots. I want to see my community thrive, and I know when the schools thrive, the community thrives and vice versa. So, you know, I don't like to complain about something, I like to do something. So there, you know, there aren't many things that I think need changing in our district, but there are a few, nothing's perfect. So I, you know, again, instead of complaining, I stepped up and found myself here. This is, you know, this is where I'm at, and the kids, you know, they're the only reason, you know, that any of us should be here, really.
Good. Put it here then.
So I'll probably echo some of what Rose said, but I'm unique in the aspect that, you know, Ms. Marchesa and I are both, both unique, we went to mentor schools.
Oh, okay.
So I have that as my background and went here, you know, kindergarten all the way through, 12th grade, and I loved it here. I actually homeschool my children, so it's an interesting dynamic because my son was in school here for kindergarten and first grade. And then there are some things that I just felt like needed to be improved. I loved a lot of it still from kind of what my background was. But I do think that there is, for me, it's about the children, but it's also about the future generation. And I've been placed in the position where I'm a voice for other people. And like you mentioned.
What do you say, voice for?
A voice for different, you know, there's different people in the community, not all of our, not all of our, not everybody in the community has children in our district.
Right.
So, it's, right, most of them. So it's really important, I think, I bring that aspect to the board, which is needed for our schools to continue to thrive. So my focus is obviously the students, or I wouldn't be here. But I think there is room for improvement.
Always. We're always going to, as part of this, take it to the next level. That's also part of our work today, thinking about next level. What is that?
Yep, so I went to the school seizure, I grew up in Mentor, my family, a lot of my family still lives here, and I have two kids who attend as well, 3rd grade and 8th grade. And so, you know, I'm pretty tethered to this community. And I ran because I wanted to take a leadership role, honestly, in my community. And I felt I had a lot to offer with the perspective and the history that I have here. And I believe that our, our public schools are, they are the anchor of a strong community. And so as an advocate for public schools, this was the way I believed I needed to step up.
My apologies for being late, I still had 5:30 on my calendar.
Well, that's pretty good that you're early.
I was going to be early. I was very excited, I was going to be early, like, oh, I miss that. But nice to see you again, Russ. I am the senior member, in a lot of ways. And I've always believed in public education as part of my own education. I went to a public high school in a sister district. And I look at public education as being what helps to form those future generations. So all the things that my three wonderful board colleagues said are part of what I think motivates all of us. And I have three grandchildren currently in the district and a little one who'll be coming up. When I ran, one of my big focal points was how well we were preparing students for the future. For me, that Career Tech PCTE was an important complement to, as we transitioned into the 2000s, further along the road, recognizing that we owe opportunity and a foundation for students across that whole spectrum. You're, I loved though what you said was, they are all our kids. So you've got kids who have special needs, and they've got a lot of very specific supports and so on. And you've got kids that are maybe academically gifted, and they will find their way with or without us. We hope to boost that progress. So whenever I see somebody getting a perfect ACT, I'm like, oh, okay, we're doing well for that constituency too. And then there's a large group of students, the majority actually, in the middle, who may have some post-secondary education, may not, may choose a military pathway or build a small business, whatever that might be. We owe them that same level of resources and energy to give them opportunities. And I, one of the things I notice, especially since, as I say, I'm vintage, the way the world has transformed since the mid-'90s. With the advent of the internet, and all of the students that we have with us are now digital natives and have been. And those digital natives may not have as much real-world experience as kids once did. You know, when your mom went, "Go play, come back at dinner." That's pretty unusual. You know, the world has changed in that way. So making those opportunities available, connecting kids with other businesses, other adult subsets who might be able to help them, as their teachers do, to find things that will interest them, give them a sustainable living, all of that, that's a big part of what I'm both grateful for and very enthusiastic about and the growth that's been made as our superintendents carry the ball a little farther with each administration. And I'm very appreciative of that. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Thanks.
Thank you. You guys aren't off the hook, by the way.
You are, or no? Start thinking.
Start thinking. You know, a lot of this is going to seem like an echo, and it's really a testament to the common ground that we have here. Because I think we really are all in it for the students. I'm a, I'm a current educator, I'm in my 24th year now in education, so it's, it's my life's work. My, my own children are in the district. I have two at the high school now. And when I got involved, it was because at the time, there really wasn't a voice of parents on the board. And, you know, being a current educator too, it's just very important for me to make sure that we're giving our children the best. And I think that all of our kids should have, you know, high-quality educators, a safe learning environment, and all of our kids should be able to achieve. And it does mean different levels. You know, there are just, there are so many different students, we are a large district, and we have many different needs. So they're coming from different backgrounds and, you know, different perspectives. And it's just, putting all of that together is, is really important because, you know, as, as all of my colleagues have said, it really is the fabric of our society. And if we're failing at the public school level, you know, we're really failing our future in our communities.
Thanks. I think I'll, I'll go back to one of the questions that was asked during the interview process for this position. And one of my core beliefs is always that every single student has a gift of some sort. And it's our job in education to be able to find what that gift is. Some of them may be a little bit more difficult to uncover, but, you know, eventually we'll find it. And when we do, how do we build something for that individual student to allow them to be successful? And, and I think, again, what, what drew me to Mentor is that connection that we have from a business operations standpoint too, with our community here. Because we have so many resources available to us. And, and the programming that we have, you know, especially from the Career Tech standpoint, was so robust, I know that that was a personal interest of mine. Because, again, once we identify that gift in the student, okay, how do you take that gift and develop it into something that is going to allow that student to earn a livable wage here in our community and give back to this community? And, and my hope is we'll, we'll continue to uncover those gifts and figure out what those connections are to business and industry and be able to tap into the resources we have here, because they are so rich in this community.
Good. Bill?
It's always been just to maximize every kid's potential. I mean, it's that simple for me. I mean, when I was a teacher, that was the case. It was always to leave the place better than I found it. So whether the kids came into my classroom or they left. Better people, better students. Building principle was always to support teachers and kids to make sure that they were maximizing everything. We created a culture of excellence, that kids were always having the opportunity to do better. I mean, as I've moved up and moved into different roles, it's just I've always looked to expand that to help make sure they're always focusing on doing what's best for kids. And having sat in many different seats, it allows me to help provide a unique perspective to our leadership team to, to do that, make sure that we have the resources to, to do what we're striving to do, which is everything that the board and superintendent has said, and helping solve that puzzle so that we can continue to move forward.
Good.
Well, I think it's important. Most people don't get a chance to really have kind of a conversation about where the heart is, right? Organizations take on the personality of your leaders, right? So when you think about that, what is it that we want our kids to see? Think about that, right? And that comes in a lot of ways, right? So if we really want this for our kids, how are we going to operate more to make sure that that happens? There's going to be disagreements, there should be disagreements along the way. But as I start talking about communication, I'm going to, I'm going to say this phrase, come back to it, and think about it, I think it's pretty profound in what it is. It's not what is said, but what is heard. Think about that. When we communicate with each other, and that's not only by our words, it's by our verbals, our non-verbals, it's by our actions, it's not what is said, but what is heard. And so as we think about that, that's how we carry ourselves. And everybody looks at us, right? We're on camera tonight, right? People come to board meetings, kids are wondering what we're doing. What is it that we want to be able to display? And how do we work together? There should be some, some conversation about things. Because I think when you move things along, there's got to be disagreement, right? Lots of times, we learn more by failure than we do by success. But there's a way how we can handle that, right? And I think that's really important. So as I go here today, and we're going to talk about that, it's where our heart goes, we go, right? So if our heart is with kids, the decisions we make and how we go about it really follows what we said today about kids. That's really our guiding principle of how we do things. That's really how, leading, you know, again, the organization will take on your personality, takes on your personality. And kind of think about, what do we want that to be? Because kids play this videotape, right? Especially with teachers, right? So every day, the kids come in your class, they're like, oh, here's your conversation at the dinner table tonight, if they're eating at the dinner table, right? What did she say today? So think about that as where we're going to go. So, so we're really going to focus on, again, the purpose is here, really trying to get what our roles, what our responsibilities, you know, how do we want to work together? We'll talk about norms, we'll talk about situations. I call them hypothetical situations, but they're really not hypothetical. Like, if you were a new board member, how do you handle things? But again, as you can see, I'm just going to jump through this because it's not a project, it's more of a, a. Agenda piece. Oh, sorry. So in your packet, what I'd like to do, I'm going to start out with hardest lessons. So that piece of paper on the right-hand side, take it out, take a look, is the hardest lessons. And this is really a conglomeration of people, really, school board members across the nation. This isn't just Ohio, this is, and they wanted, they kind of put out, what are some of these lessons that were learned by board members, right? Because when you get on the board, you might have an idea, you might not have an idea. But I think you also find when you're on the board, there's a whole lot more information than you would believe. You think about, you transport kids, you educate kids, there's mental health pieces with kids that we're struggling with now, there's food service, there's, you know, sometimes after-school programs, there's sports. I mean, it's a huge, huge operation, right? So I'm going to kind of go through a few of these, and this will kind of set the tone of kind of how we're going to go. But these are, and agree, disagree as you want to go, or you might want to add one or two. Maybe Jenny, since you're the vintage one.
Yeah.
So like, one of them is learning to acknowledge publicly that you have no power and authority as an individual board member, that only the board as a whole can make policies and decisions for the school district. Sometimes that's a tough one. But it's a reality, right? It's not one person. We kind of, hopefully we have time today, and I will tell you this, if we want to go further, because, you know, the hard stop today, I can always come back to do a few more pieces. You'll see how the scenarios go. You might want to say, well, we want to do round two. I can't compete with an attorney, but I'm a whole lot cheaper getting an attorney. But, you know.
Sold.
Yeah. Looking like a treasure. But again, that's one we have to work through. Like, how do you work through some of that, right? Determining what your function is on the board and how to accomplish it effectively. I think that's part of learning. Where do we fit? Where do we fit in committees? You know, now you're board members, you're parents, but you're a board member. There's a positional power piece there, we're going to talk a little bit about too, and what that is like, and you're going to find some differences there. There, when no matter what you think, you know about board service, when you first come on board, you still have a lot to learn. If, after a year goes by, if you know it all, I, graduation, I was a superintendent for 10 years. There was days that go, I said, boy, I must have missed that class in college because I didn't know how to handle that, you know? And so, same thing with the board, sometimes things come up. And there's reasons why board meetings are such the way they are, and how you respond to public, because there are so many layers sometimes with decisions that get made, or there's personal information that's involved, that you've got to be careful what you say. Recognizing setting policy, which is the board's role, and we'll get to the board's role because there's buckets for the board. It's the board's job setting policy and a few other things, and then administering the school, which is superintendent's job. We'll talk about where that balance is, right? So we want to make sure there's a healthy balance. Because when there's not a healthy balance, we really can't go anywhere. That you represent, I think we talked about this, all students, right? They are all your kids, right? All your kids. So how you make decisions, you have to be careful because it's not just because there might be a special interest to somebody, because if you're somebody that got on because of special ed, right? Special ed's a huge piece, but there's more than special ed, right? There's these kids across the spectrum, and there's, the spectrum has gotten bigger and bigger and bigger. You've got to take care of them all, right? Learning how to respond to complaints and concerns of citizens. School administrators and other staff will go through some scenarios on how to handle that. That change comes slowly. You know, some people kind of say, big organizations, you know, it's like the Titanic moving. Hopefully, we're not that slow, but school systems can be because you've got so many different people, so many different opinions and so forth. But we've got to make changes, we've got to continue to improve and go to the next level. That's, you hear me, when I do searches for superintendents and so forth, where the thing is, is who are you going to pick that's going to take your district to the next level? What is the next level? That's a good question for you to have, what is the next level? You know, what is it that you want for your kids? That you must think deeply and sometimes accept the reality that is contrary to your own beliefs. And boy, that's hard. Especially if you're a type A personality like me, sometimes you think you want to be right. But my wife tells me when I'm wrong, you know? But how do you, you know, the other part of that is how do you also, you know, being an effective board member, sometimes you're going to have the minority viewpoint. But how do you support the whole group for the betterment of the organization? You need to have dialogue. How do you have dialogue? And I think that will probably come with attorney, like, how can you do things outside of this? But you, but how do you have dialogue that's, you know, because the bottom, last one there is the focus is on student achievement, right? So when you have dialogue, you really got to come back to, when all said and done, is what is right for kids? Sometimes, many times, when we get into a battle for things, it's more sometimes it gets about adult behavior or adult feelings than it is about kids. So that's why I said in the very beginning, I'm going to tell you my why and where I'm going to come from, but it's about kids. It's why we're here. If we didn't have kids, we wouldn't be here, right? And each kid comes with a different story. Each kid comes to school every day wanting to make sure that they do their best. Something might derail them throughout the day, but it's our job to take care of them so that when you are graduation and you shake their hands, that you send them off into the world that you know you've done anything you can to help them. That's why we're here. So those are some of the hardest lessons. And some of those are very hard, quite frankly. Especially the viewpoint, that how do you agree and how do you disagree? We'll get through some of that here, but that is hard, right? You have it no matter where you are in the organization. So vintage board member, are there any others that you'd like to add? That you know, since you've been on the board the longest? And then everybody else, if you have one.
And this was something that I didn't even recognize at first. It took me a couple of years of serving, and I realized that politeness let me perhaps choose to do this or that. And they, they wouldn't necessarily say like, that's really too mu, like, you're trying to do a good job, you want to do your best, you want to give evidence of your caring and willingness to help and do. But if you stepped over what was really appropriate as a board member, because you have a unique role. It's not like a PTA parent, for example, they're free to kind of, but you have a level of authority. You know, if you would just show up at a school, that's a very kind of intrusive thing to do. So instead of there being clear guidelines of, if you would like to go to a school, make sure that you have the superintendent give you the okay. And having been in the schools, those lines were sort of fuzzy at first.
And you know, Jenny, we'll talk about that here a little bit today. So I want you to hold, that is a specific one about our positional power. And as we go through that, you have policy on certain things, but there's, how do we handle those things, right? And that's what we want to talk about today. What does everybody agree on, how do we handle those things? So that we all understand, and we all understand why we do those things. And because you're hitting on something that's, it's really hard, I think, as a board member to understand that, right? We're parents, right? You want to go in there, you want to say hi, you want to be helpful.
Yeah.
But that positional power is totally different in that role. So that's, if I don't get to it, you better hold me to it. Anybody else have one? You're learning even in the short, how long have you been on?
Two years.
Two years? So you're still relatively working?
We're very new.
Two, two, two.
Two meetings.
Okay. So you might be about to add to this list, but this is what people have said. I want to, I want to bring that out, but again, we'll, we'll work through different things today. But let's go to the roles, responsibilities, really, you know, I mentioned in here, but there's like three buckets that board members are really in. You know, they set policy. You know, they set policy, right? That's a huge piece. They set policy. They hire the superintendent, treasurer, and evaluate them, which those go together. So, you know, so that's a really huge piece. Those are your two direct reports. I don't think you have another direct report, do you? Yeah. So, the two direct reports, right? So, that's who you're responsible for, right? And, and the other one is setting strategic direction. Now, and that kinda takes a few of those ten basic responsibilities there, but, that, because that, because strategic, that talks about organizational planning, resources, and manage those. But, boards are in those buckets, whereas superintendent is a day-to-day operations, okay? It's like, you're kinda the what, and he's the how, we're gonna get it done, right? And you hold him responsible, and administrators, and Bill responsible to get that, get that done. That, those are the, kind of the buckets that you're in as a board. Sometimes people think you can come in and just say, I want you to fire this principal.
Thanks.
Well, you know what? That falls under the superintendent to make sure that they, that evaluation has been done, they investigate, right? When those lines start to get crossed, then we start to have, we have, have issues, right? Because that's the day-to-day operation, and hopefully, there's no surprises like that, which is one thing I will get to, and we never want surprises, right? We'll get to that one, because it's a huge one. But, the day-to-day, those kind of decisions, you know, when you go to a board meeting, let's face it, eighty-five percent of that's gonna be boilerplate, right? You've got personnel issues all the time, you might have some policies, you've got, you know, resignations, you know, a lot of that stuff is boilerplate stuff, it's boring, right? But there's other stuff that, you know, you know, how do you strategically work through things? And coming up, I think you mentioned, I think, when I talked to you today, you're gonna be talking about strategic planning, which is something really important for the board to get involved in coming up. That's in, what, about a year or so?
Next couple, next couple of weeks.
Shows the conversation, how I remembered it for a few hours today. But, that's a really huge piece, setting the direction. And when you start talking about what do we want for kids as they grow up, that's gonna be very important. And, you know, focusing it on the kids, and where we want the kids to go, I think is even a bigger piece. And I think part of the group that you're looking at is really gonna be focused on that part, which I think is really healthy, is really good. So, three buckets, the strategic vision, right? The hiring, evaluation of the superintendent, hopefully, it's not fire, and treasurer, hopefully, it's not firing them. Right? Policy, and then, you know, strategic vision, those things. Any questions about that, any problems, or understanding what might be some nuances with that? I don't wanna make any assumptions. Okay, good. So, we go there. So, the next, next slide is, I like to put in here, right? People have seen this, this is, no, this is the arrow going straight, right? When we get, and you notice the arrow, there's a bunch of arrows inside that arrow. For the people in the audience, so they can hear, then there's arrows on the outside of the arrows that go this way, right? So, the goal is to try to get our arrows aligned. Now, there's gonna be, sometimes there's gonna be an arrow, as you see, sometimes an arrow's gonna be going the other direction, right? And that's gonna be, that might be helpful. That's how you start to move the needle sometimes, you have disagreements, but that's how you do that. But then, there's also this, these arrows on the outside that are gonna constantly, that's the phone calls you get. That's when you're at the grocery store. That's, you know, the emails that you might get. And how do you handle those, right? And there's ways to handle those. Your job isn't to solve those problems for every individual person, because if you start to go down that road, first, you don't have all background knowledge about everything. But then, everybody's gonna come to you and expect you to solve it the way that you want it solved. And there's more stories, and that's, people sometimes don't understand how many layers there are to things. When you have kids, and you have families, and you have curriculums, and you have all this stuff, you've got a lot of, a lot of pieces, parts to move. So, that's why the day-to-day operation really goes for these folks, and you help set the direction, and make sure that they're, continue to got their eye on the prize, right? That's the healthiest organizations. When that gets all askew, then we have problems, because then it becomes chaos, right? And I like to say, we don't want board meetings to become must-see TV, right? Remember, board meetings is actually where you do your work. There's a difference between a public meeting and a board meeting. A board meeting is held in public, but that's your work meeting, right? Folks, most people don't know all the background that you get, the memos that you get, the packet that you get, the preparation for board meetings, right? Where a public meeting is just a forum where everybody can come and just say, hey, say what you want, right? So, remember those, there's, there's a difference between that. That is your work meeting, right? And so, how do you get to work? Now, there's a lot that happens behind the scenes, and how, how do you get to that, right? That's, kinda work through some of that. But we wanna do as best as we can keeping our arrows going, and sometimes, we're all gonna fall off the apple cart, right? So, we all gotta help each other stay on it, because, let's face it, if you're like me, something's gonna, you're gonna get a burr, and you're gonna say, this is a problem, how am I gonna handle that, right? We'll talk a little bit about that. But that's, so, the idea, if you turn to the next page there, it's really where I want us to be. So, effective district work culture, think of two sides of the pendulum. There's a middle, and there's two extremes. Anytime, I think, you get to the two far extremes, it becomes dangerous, right? You wanna, it vacillates in the middle. It's gotta go back and forth at different times, right? But, kids need consistency, people need consistency, right? We make changes for what the right seasons are, so we wanna make sure that we're staying in that balance. Do a lot of things with the like or kinda scale, and I think, you know, we sometimes in education upon from one polar extreme to the other polar extreme, but you know what? No matter where ideas that you have, there's positive ideas people have, no matter where you are. How do we blend that together to make it the best organization that we can? Those are organizations that move to the next level quicker, right? So, that's kinda where, I'm gonna start talking now a little bit about norms, but does that make sense? Is anything I said here you wanna disagree with? We're all good? We're all good so far? Okay. So, we're gonna talk, talking about communication now, because this is really the root of everything. So, I'm gonna outplay out different scenarios with you, and my purpose here isn't to, I might give you suggestions, but I might dig a little bit more, to ask for clarification, so that ultimately, everybody knows how we wanna do things, right? There's five people on a board, you'll, you'll see where this is going, but don't take offense if I dig, ask you to dig a little bit deeper, okay? So, communication, again, is really important. So, I'm gonna start with this. So, Craig, how do you communicate with the board?
We send weekly updates, basically letting everybody know what...
Is that a Friday memo?
On a, on Fridays, typically, two-thirty. Lately, it's been more like five. But, trying to get things done by around two-thirty, and, and we post those to board docs for all of our board members to be able to access. Just kinda filling them in on, hey, here are some of the meetings this week, here are some of the hot-button topics that have taken place. Here are some of the, you know, the conversations we've had internally from our administrative team. You know, if there are policy considerations that, you know, we've been talking about at a public meeting, summarizing some of the comments and making a recommendation, hey, we should probably talk about this at the next meeting, that sort of thing. If there's something immediate that is popping up, that, you know, might be media coverage of some sort, normally, I will send a group text message to the, to all the board members and say, hey, just wanna let you know, you know, Channel Five was here today talking about the bus driver shortage. You know, will be mentioned on TV tonight, so that people know. Or, you know, if we had a, an issue at a, a building where, you know, electricity went out for a period of time, it blew a generator or whatever, I'll let them know what's going on with that. You know, if a front-end loader gets stolen and run into our building.
Which, it would never happen, right?
It would never happen, but just, let's just play it out and say that it did. I would, I would let the board members know on an early Saturday morning that that indeed did take place, and that what you're seeing on social media is accurate. So, those sorts of things are more immediate in nature. You know, if there's something that one of the board members is getting from a specific community member, oftentimes, they'll flip me that email, and, and again, we'll, we'll take care of that administratively.
There's a lot there to unpack.
Yes, so there's a lot.
There's a lot there to unpack. How about you? You the same thing?
Oh, shoot, I'm supposed to communicate with them? Same way. I have a lot less, obviously. Yeah, I mean, so mine's basically Friday update. But when it comes to, a lot of like, a lot of times lately, it's been situations where people have asked questions about policies or interpretations, so I'll do a lot of that legwork to respond, than to respond to everybody, so everybody gets the same information.
So, let's talk, so that's what, is that working for everybody?
Well, so, I think we've gotten a better setup since board meetings, because we used to have it where we would get the board update and the agenda on like a Friday, and then our board meetings on Tuesday, and then, nobody's available to answer questions like throughout the weekend. So, we have updated that, we got it, so that's, so we're, I feel like we've done a pretty good job of that.
So, Russ, one of the things that we...
And I'll get to board meetings too.
Yeah, that's one of the other pieces from a, from a board agenda standpoint. We'll do a, a draft on Tuesday to give everybody a first look at it. We do a, a final draft review on Thursday, Friday, and get that sent out to all the board members done that way too. But that, that was something that we, we tried to give it to them, because our board meetings are on Tuesdays, so it gives them a week, you know, hey, here's some of the, the things. We may tweak a little bit between Tuesday and Friday, but for the most part, they're gonna know what the meat of that agenda is gonna be the week before.
I'm gonna go back to, is, is the Friday memo, the update, has that got the information that you need? Do you feel well communicated with, is there, what happens if there's a question? So, how do you guys respond through that Friday memo? Let's go, say there's something I don't understand. What's your, what's the protocol that you guys are using, or is everybody doing the same thing?
I usually email, so if it's, if it's Bill that sent it out, I'll email him directly and say, hey, I have these questions, or Craig, same thing. And, I mean, not typically on a Friday, it's usually, you know, for Sundays.
So, is there an expectation that every, all board members then should be on that email and hear the responses? Or, do you just kinda trust each other that this is, you know, if it's a big issue, they will communicate to all five? How do you guys want to do that?
Well, my, that, that's a good question, because I'm really...
Starting off good today.
Well, I'm really trying to make sure I'm following all the rules, and then especially the Open Meetings Act, so that was a question. So, how you mentioned, we, for the last, our first meeting, my first meeting, I brought up something in new business, and the, the response was, let's get everybody's information, send it to Craig. Is he allowed to be that hub that then disperses that? And as long as, I guess, we don't respond to that email to everybody, I just wanna make sure that that, because it's, what's, what's happening here with our weekly updates works for me. I mean, if I have a question, I reach out. Yeah, that's easy.
Well, so, yeah, so some, some people pick up the phone, feel comfortable to pick up the phone, call. One of these two. The question becomes, how am I gonna get to a policy here that you have? But you're right, what happens when you have a question? And then, really, the question becomes, you know, kind of a trust factor. What is it that should go to all the board members, right? Because sometimes you don't know if it's a hot button or you interpret things, because sometimes written communication is one-way communication, and it's not what is said, but what is heard. You know, you could write an email one way, and it's not being interpreted. So, email, is it working? I mean, is it working when you guys have questions, or you have that now? You're, everybody's okay with emailing these two guys, and it's, the flow's going back and forth, okay?
If it's still during the workday, you know, so long as it's before six o'clock, I assume, it might be driving home, but if I had a specific question, I might call. One of the things I hadn't realized immediately when I was associate first on is the volume of email that comes to the superintendent's inbox. We, we're teasing, it's a little bit like Bruce Almighty. It's so many, and so, if it's a question, especially if it has to do with the upcoming board meeting, so it's a more immediate piece of information that I had a question about, then, if I can make a call, I try to leave the, from six o'clock Friday until Monday morning as, you know, respectful. That's what I was referring to earlier. That was never, it was kinda left vague, well, if it's an emergency, or respecting the rest of the person who's leading the district, that has to be a piece of it. Obviously, if it's an urgent matter, that's different. But, a question about some detail on the agenda, I would not intrude on that weekend time. I would either send an email or wait until Monday morning.
And I think that we, well, this is only my opinion, so I wanna hear everyone's. But, to Annie's point, it used to be really hard, because we would get the agenda on Friday, and we felt like, oh, I don't wanna bother them on the weekend, but the meeting is Tuesday, and it's gonna go public, and we won't even have answers. So, I really appreciate having the agenda early now, because now I feel like, within the work week and the work times, I can contact them. So, the way it's set up right now really does work well for me. I also don't expect an answer back right away, like, if I send a message, you know, within twenty-four hours, I, they're actually very, very quickly, very quickly respond, but I don't expect that either. So, I guess, is it working for you guys? Because you're having a lot more, especially you, a lot more communication than I am, and you're...
Like, I've got seven hundred emails sitting in my inbox right now.
It was four hundred and thirty-something.
Yeah, so...
There's meetings all day.
Literally, it's crazy with the meeting schedule, and, and that's why I apologize if I haven't gotten back. But, just so everybody around the table knows too, typically, when I get, get on my email, the first thing I'll do is, I'll just type in the search bar, Rose. Okay, there's her, respond to those. Annie. Okay, there's those, and trying to respond that way. So, so that's kinda how I've been approaching it, because I wanna make sure I take care of all of you first before I get to some of the other things, so I apologize, Bill.
I never get a response, so do I call.
He never types in.
There's a reason.
I think, knowing that too, if you didn't get a response, I think it would be good to call and say, hey, by the way, you know, don't take it a personal offense, because most superintendents are like Pavlov's dog, the phone goes off, and you're answering it, right? But, there is a lot.
And, and the other thing too, and I, I know several of you have, have done this too, and when Rose wanted to talk the other day, hey, do you have a quick second to chat, you know, and text, you know, and Maggie does that constantly too, with, hey, I got a question, can you talk? And, and typically, you know, I'll be sitting in a meeting and go, okay. And as soon as I'm able to, to get back to you, I'll, I'll give you a quick phone call that way.
The group text, okay, can work, but you have to be careful with that, right? So, if there's something like nine or ten on the Richter scale, right, you're texting everybody, and, you know, there's an emergency, they'll, they'll get to you. But, it's not, when that happens, it's not the time to go back and forth, right?
And everybody's been great with that too. The responses have been, thanks for the update, or thanks for the info, and, and literally, that's all it's been with that. And that's the reason behind those, those texts too.
So, what you do is public record, right? It's all of that, so, knowing that, but, and then your attorney will do a good job about, you know, because you do have conversation stuff, but you can't make decisions, except in the board meetings, right? You're not polling anybody, all those kinds of things. But the text, usually, that's usually a good, quick, I need something right now, kinda piece. Email, or the phone call, maybe a little bit, something I can give twenty-four hours for, you know? Is that kind of a sum agreeable?
I usually, so, I don't have a lot of questions normally that are urgent. Bill's extremely responsive with questions regarding the agenda. I know if, if I text Craig, he's gonna get back to me very quickly, but I don't feel that I've had a lot of questions that need urgently answered, so what I've been doing, you're not gonna like this, but what I've been doing is compiling any other non-urgent questions for when we actually get to meet. Because I know we will, and so, I mean, that's just, I think it's a better use of your time, my time too. You know, just compiling those, I have all kinds of questions, but they don't need to be answered right away, so... It's gonna be a long meeting, but, and I also find it's, it's much more efficient to talk through when I have questions about things.
Yeah, so, we're gonna come back to that a little bit, but I, I, in your right side, there's policies here. Let's just kinda go, there's one, this is board-staff communications. This is policy that you have. And it really, it kinda states some of the rules there. Board communication, staff communication with the board, board communication... Board communication, staff communication to the board, board communication to staff, and the social interaction piece. So I think if, if you haven't seen this, I'm just bringing it to your, your attention. But basically, it really does kinda talk a little bit about the communication really kinda goes through the superintendent that you have, right? And direct communications to staff really isn't the way the policy is written, right? So your response back to staff really should go through the superintendent because there's probably more to the story, right? So you could get, so let's just play this now. What happens if you get an email from a staff member about something? What do you do?
I would share it with Craig.
Craig.
Good answer. It's such a good answer. No, really, that's, that's exactly how you should handle it. Maybe a nice, thank you. We're gonna pass it on to the superintendent. It's the same kinda thing if you're going to the grocery store. Somebody's gonna say there's an issue. There's two ways to, you know, something happened to my child, right? There was a discipline issue or this, somebody did something to my kid or I didn't like what this teacher did. What's a good, what's, what are some of the words that we should use for tho, those people?
I always thank the person for calling something to my attention. And if they're just venting, let's say it's a not specific thing, that may be the end of it. But certainly if it's something that is a consequence, it needs to be followed up. And I would say, I'll be glad to share that with Mr. Heath, Mr. Wade, whatever the appropriate.
Let's step back one more piece. There is chain of command.
Principal.
Yeah, because it could be, have you talked to your teacher? You have, you have to determine, you know, what level it is. If someone, have you talked to the counselor? Have you talked to the teacher? Have you talked to the principal? Cause not everything should go to the superintendent, right? Cause the building principal or the teacher's gonna wanna know the issue. So those are, thank you for your input. Have you, have you talked to the teacher about that issue? Have you talked to the counselor? Those are good ways to put you in that situation, say, really, we need to go back to the people who really can make that decision and know this, know the story and can actually do something about it, right? Because they're with those kids every day. Or then, you know, depends on what level it is. Now, if there's something, you know, nine or ten on the Richter scale, you know, you're heading there. That's kind of some words you can use. Also, the other part is, you can always go back to, to, again, cause if you start to try to solve everybody's problem, they're gonna continue to come to you, solve everybody's problem and you can't. Right? And that's not, really not what your role is, right? Uh, last meeting I was at, there was a, um, board member said they, and they had a really good response is that, you know, this is understand the board's responsibility, its policy, strategic vision, superintendent. What you're talking about is really responsibility of our administration, the day-to-day operations. Please. Take that. So you went back to what the roles responsibilities are. Because really the answer is going, how it's gonna get solved, it really is gonna happen at this level. You might come back, but there is a key point here. How do you, so when you get that, you s, you said you passed the email. How do you, no, how does um Rose then know that it was handled? You know, cause sometimes we wanna complete the loop. So you need to make sure that, again, the loop gets closed. How we acknowledge it in a closed loop. How does that happen? Or how should it happen?
Usually Craig lets us know, hey, this is what I'm doing.
I can probably be better than that because I know there are times that we have resolved something and I haven't let everybody know. But it, you know, just in the day-to-day operations, I'll be like, okay, yeah, we got that taken care of. You know, I may have some sort of communication back to the individual that may have reached out to you and they know it's resolved, but you guys don't. Um, so know that they're being resolved at some level, but in, I will make sure I try to get back to you. I do it often, but probably not every single time. Um, so that's something if, if we wanna set that as one of our norms, I can certainly try uh to make sure I'm, I'm following back with, with all of you as well or to the individual that brought it to our attention.
Personally, I don't know that I need that. If, as long as you acknowledge you're taking care of it or like, for instance, we had a recent scenario where somebody did go to the principal and then assistant principal and then came to the board, a couple of board members. So I sent it to Craig and he was like, okay, listen, this is what's going on. They'll take it from here. I'm, okay, great. I don't need to know. You know, now if we get something else from that individual, then I would probably say, okay, can you provide me an update, you know? But I don't know that I need that for every thing that we give to you.
Yeah. Be, it, because the other thing is too, oftentimes when I, I get those, you know, it's not even me that's resolving that. It's somebody else that really is in, in charge of that department. Or handles that student situation if it's, it's not handled at the principal level. You, you know, typically, Mr. Hammond, our assistant superintendent's gonna be the one that's, that's handling it. So I'll, I'll pass it off to him and, and he takes care of it and, and he'll give me some updates. You know, and at that point, I'm like, okay, great. It's taken care of. Um, and he's been in communication with that, with that parent or that family. But uh, but again, if, if you guys hear from that parent or family again, hey, haven't heard anything, then, you know, get back on me and, hey, what's going on? And I can figure out, okay, who did I, who did I delegate that to? Or did I take care of that one myself and give you the, the information that you might?
I think it's okay to say if you haven't heard, got a response.
Right.
Probably don't say if you didn't get a response that you like. Cause sometimes they're not gonna get the response they like and they, they can't. But if you haven't heard anything, you know, let us, let us know. That, that you can kinda follow through. But, so really we're communicating and you're gonna respond if it's an email, respond back that I can, you got it.
Craig, would you prefer we, that we do in some instances, go to Tim?
No, you can just send them to me and then I'll delegate them out. Because again, with, with that information and that helps me know what's going on as well and, and I can always then follow up. And there are other times that things were brought to my attention that I had no idea what was going on, you know, because it hadn't reached our level yet. So if there is something that's kinda percolating out there, you know, I would wanna know that just for my own, my own sake, that I know what's going on. But e, even though somebody else may be handling that, it's very easy for me to, to forward that information and say, hey, Tim, can you look into this or have you heard of this situation yet? And, and oftentimes, I'll forward the email and then he'll come over and knock on the door. He's like, yeah, had the conversation last week. This is what was going on. Great, thanks. Got it.
So we're trying to close the loop, which is important, handling it on that, that stand. Oh, back to this board member, parent, how do you, how do you walk that line? Cause it's a difficult line sometimes. I was just doing this with Willoughby Eastlake. Pat Ward, who's the superintendent now, also has kids. And he went to a conference with the teacher. The teacher was, he wasn't dad. He was superintendent, the boss. And he felt so bad for, for the teacher because the teacher, that was intimidating. That's positional power. So he said, this is why, you take care of it, you know, I won't do. But it's, it's one of those things that I think we have to talk about to appreciate. Right? So um when you talk to somebody that's a, as a staff member, they're hearing you as a board member, your boss. Now, now some board members say, I'm just here, that's a po, I'm here as a mom, right? Sometimes it's probably a good, good statement. I'm here as a mom. But uh, I give this one example of um, another district I had and a board member was, is always in the building, is nicest guy, has the greatest heart. He would never, he would never have any mean bone in his body. But it's, yeah, I'd like to go and say to this teacher that, hey, there's a grant you wanna apply for. Again, it's not what it said but what it's heard. What do you think the teacher heard? I better find, find for that grant. If I don't get that grant, he's gonna be mad at me. Am I gonna get in trouble? Right? He was like, oh my God, I've broken the rules all the time. You know, but it's not that there was anything bad or malicious about it. It's like telling the custodian, can you go out and throw more salt? I can guarantee you that custodian's gonna come in and say, am I gonna get fired? Right? It, it's that positional power is real to people. Again, you might have relationships with people and you may or may not, if you know people for a long time. I just wanna bring that up as, you know, it, it, I think Jenny brought it up as going into the buildings, right? If you go in the building, you're gonna go there for PTO or PTA, whatever it is that you have here. You're gonna go in there for conferences. Right? You have a right to go do all that stuff. But if you happen to just show up and nobody knows you're coming there, you know, what's gonna happen? Rose is here. Did somebody do something wrong? And you think, you might think that that's crazy, but the reality is that the reality. Again, it's not what it said but what it's heard. It's just that physical present of what might be said or what isn't said. And that's uncomfortable. You know, I thought myself, you know, as superintendent, I grew up in Aurora. I was a student in Aurora. I was a principal. I was a teacher. I was then the superintendent. But even the people that I literally worked with for years, it was different when I would walk into their class. Right? Cause it, what happened? Something, is everything, is everything all right? So I just wanna bring that up. And so I don't know what, how do you guys work that in terms of coming into buildings? I don't know if there's policy to that. Okay. Let's talk about, what is that?
It says that we have to go through Craig and, and the building principal. I believe it's both.
Yeah, and, and typically they're, like, take for example the shore thing from last week when you guys were over there doing the
Interview.
The mock interview type things. Yeah, I, board members get invited in by teachers. Absolutely, absolutely. Um, you know, if there's something else that you wanna see, you know, then you can come through me and, and, you know, obviously we'll jump in and do, you know, take the tour of the building. And that, that'll be part of the conversation that we have with Rose and Lauren as, as new members as well. Um, like the first day of school, we actually, you know, with board members, we'll take them from building to building on the first day. And it's, it's a heck of a day, but we get to every single building.
I was gonna say, cause sometimes your board members wanna know what's going on, you know, just facilities and that's if you do it the first day of school or whenever, I don't care what it is. But it is something new board members should want to do. To walk through the buildings and kinda see what's there, especially if there's issues that you have to deal with, you know, bond issue at some point in time that you're aware of.
That way they know the, the layout of the buildings, you know, introduce them to the principals, you know, see some things going on and and again, you know, I think we're at the point now, you know, the, I, I try to get into buildings, you know, every single week. And, you know, the teachers are comfortable with me popping in and out all the time. Uh, yeah. Oftentimes I just go in there and stir up trouble and leave, but so it's not necessarily always, always fun for them. But uh, but you know, go in just to see what's going on. And um, you know, if you guys were, you know, coming around with me, I, it'd be perfectly fine. So that'll, that'll be something. And, and really I'll, I'll open up that up to, to anyone, you know, if there's any time. Hey, it's been a while since I've been in buildings. Can, you know, can we go, you know, carve out a couple hours and just pop in a couple places? Love to be able to, to walk you around different places.
I think it's important for new and vintage board members, you know, think about a list of things that you don't know that you wanna know about. You know, my guess is you're probably gonna wanna spend more time with Bill to learn about the numbers, right? The five-year forecast, maybe you do, maybe you don't. But there's so much that goes on behind that. How do you get edge? You can't know. It's not, not a fun thing.
He's pretty good about sharing.
But that's, that's a real learning curve. Cause one of the things, most people don't know how schools are funded. And you know about the money that's coming in, the money going out, where it goes? I mean, there's a vast, you know, when you say that you've got, you're spending X amount per kid, that's an average. But you could have a child that's got those severe issues that cost you a hundred thousand dollars a year to educate versus from the others. People don't know, but how do you learn about the finance so that you know enough to be dangerous? Right? Instead of just looking at the bottom right-hand corner to see when, when the money runs out. But why does it? Why does it over time? You know, why do schools typically have to go back to the ballot every five, six years or so? What is the purpose for that? And there's, there's reasons for some of that. So, you know, that might be something, you know, think about those things where your leaders here can help educate you on that. Sometimes those are good work session topics. I mean, not always in a board meeting, but when you have a chance, you know, like this to do that, I think that's, that can be really helpful. Because knowledge is power, right? The more you know, now, the more you'll understand. Sometimes how the decisions get made and why they get made the way they do. Because you make the decisions based on the data that you have at home, right?
One other thing to, to mention ba, based off of that policy that you brought up here too, Russ, is you know, if you wanna, if you wanna have a conversation with, with a staff member about something, I, like Rose, I know you're talking about cell phone policy pieces. You, feel free to reach out to me. I, we've got a great relationship with, with all of our staff. But, you know, i, if we wanna go through MCE or MTA and, and kinda get a, a sense for what they're talking about, be happy to sit down and help facilitate that conversation or do the introduction and say, hey, have a great conversation. I'm gonna go answer two or three of my seven hundred emails and, um, and, and let you go. That way, that way, again, I'm aware of what those conversations and those topics are and, and can help steer you to the right person at, at times too. I know Greg Lowers is a great person. He, you know, and he came up to us the other day. He's like, hold on, Rose reached out to me. I said, okay, I'm like, it's fine. I know, I know. It's all good. I know. So um, he, he said, but, you know, should, you know, are we okay? I'm like, yeah. I said, we're fine.
Well, how, how should I handle that? Cause it was a basketball game.
Yeah, and, and again, that, you know, to Russ's point too, and you know, and you're gonna have those conversations all the time. Um, you know, if there's something broader that we wanna talk about that, that may be policy related, then, you know, let, let's get the group together and, and you know, I can facilitate a conversation with, with a teacher or principal or, or whoever. You know, because it may be a good thing from the high school perspective, but maybe it's different at the middle school perspective. And maybe it can bring in somebody else that can, we can talk to on that topic or, you know, is it an elementary thing? Let's talk to, you know, teachers, principals there. Um, that way we can, uh, we can help facilitate some of that. And again, I, I know some of those hot button topics that, uh, that they're interested in and you're interested in. And how do we kinda work together on that too? Just to make sure we cover our bases with that policy, so.
Okay, you're, you're gonna have a lot of questions and you're gonna have, again, that's how we communicate, right? So we've already, so we can email, we can call, we'll, we'll close that loop. You know, the question becomes that, and again, we kinda mentioned here, when does it need to be something for all five board members to, to hear? Right? So, you know, is it nine or ten on the Richter scale? Maybe it's, maybe it's, it's issue by issue that happens. But that is, that is one of those pieces. And I don't know how you handle that now. A lot of people handle that by, uh, let's just say Jenny had a question and is calling Craig and there, it becomes in the conversation. What do you think? Should we let everybody know? Should it go through the board president? Should it come from the superintendent? How do you guys wanna kinda think, work through that? Are they coming to you as a board president for things? Um, how do you work the board president role?
I'm a new board president. So I haven't
Craig.
I haven't had that yet. At this point, it's really been, um, we go through Craig and, and he will share things like sometimes a, a great question will come up, you know, one of our board members asks a question to, to one of them and, and they'll say, and when they respond back, they'll respond back to all of us and they'll say, hey, I had a really great question from, you know, so-and-so. And I thought this is information we should all know, you know, regarding, you know, X, Y, Z. And, and then it is all given to us. We don't respond back to it because we don't wanna have a a chain conversation where
Right.
you know, we're violating anything. But, but it is like, so we all have the same knowledge base if it's maybe something.
And sometimes there are board things that they should come to you if there's a question, right? There might just be, be something. Uh, sometimes the board's role, president's role is different, right? The board president's not there, that goes to the vice president. But think about that as, who's the spokesperson for the board? Spokes, a spokesperson for the board, it goes to the board president. Now, hopefully, that whatever information is being shared, everybody knows what that is. Is that a good norm to have? So we're gonna send something out in a press release? How do you guys do the press releases?
We haven't done one yet since I've been here. Well, we did, we did um, with, when we were doing the superintendent's search and Mary was the president and she worked with Kristen. Um, you know, communications.
So we've got a communications director that typically anything from a press release standpoint would go through her.
For like an official board.
Sure.
Yeah, so the board president would work with our communications director to make a press release.
So I'm gonna have one here later on. Must deal with one of the, one of the, a good governing principle. That is, no surprises for anybody. Let's pull the last page out of here.
Can we go back? I, I have a question though.
Sure.
So if I am to go to my president, how am I, what if it's something that I've already discussed with somebody else? I don't wanna break that open meetings act and then get to go to a third. So that would be in this instance, why I didn't go to her.
So, yeah, you're not saying, hey, I'm, I'm definitely, I'm not voting for this and I know Lauren's not voting for this and she doesn't vote. That's not a conversation. But there might be a question you have about something. Do you know any, you know a little bit more about this? I'm, I'm wondering about that. That's okay. Now, your attorney, I'm gonna divert that to the attorney later on, but you are allowed to have some conversation. You cannot vote. You cannot discuss You cannot discuss how everybody's going to vote. You know, when things are gonna come up that they're gonna be on the agenda, those are, again, that's a little bit more dicey, but those you probably go to the superintendent with.
Okay, that was one of the questions.
Because that becomes another one of those, I'm gonna get to the no surprises. You never want to go to a board meeting to surprise anybody. Right, it just, it just looks bad, right? I joke about this, but this is true, I had a board president who was there for 14 years, got to know him really well and we gave, we all made a pact. Before that I heard, he said, we're never gonna play stump the chump, and I was the chump, right? We're never gonna play that.
I like that.
We all left.
Is that a norm? Please.
Yeah. Yeah, and so, and what, what happens in that, that plays out in so many ways, and if you start to thinking about it is, okay, so if you're in a board meeting, if you have a question about something that's gonna be up on a board meeting, you want to ask it. I don't know if you wait to the board meeting to ask it, but there could be, again, layers, it might not be as easy as a yes or no or a cost is or that, there could be processes behind it. If you're gonna ask a question, our norm, or war when we did that, is us, like, have a conversation with Russ or the treasurer to say, just be prepared for this answer, I'm gonna ask you this question. Because it might mean that they've got to do some other digging to prepare for that, right? That's part of the no surprises piece. You know, it's, you know, you don't want to, you know, so there's one I'm working with right now is that, you know, it happened at a board meeting, somebody said, well, boy, I'm putting a resolution here because I want to bring lacrosse to the district. Well, you know, that's not a place to bring that, right? There's been no conversation, there's no cost analysis, there's no, you know, all kinds of issues, that's, that's a surprise that, you know, there should have been some conversations that, hey, here's something I'd like, can you have the athletic director go see what it's gonna cost? Because you've got to negotiate what that supplemental's gonna be, because that's gotta go through the union, right? How do we have the buses in order to be able to take the kids away? You know, how do we line the field if it's not lined for lacrosse? See, there's layers upon layers upon layers that could happen versus just saying, hey, yeah, let's just have lacrosse. It'd make a lot of people happy. But lacrosse is probably gonna cost you a lot of money when you start taking buses and uniforms and all, can you feasibly, feasibly do that? Or how can you plan that out for a period of time? So, you know, you come to a board meeting and we're gonna, I, I like, we kind of started a little bit of that, is that, so you're, you get the packet on what day?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, board meeting is?
Following Tuesday.
Following Tuesday, so you've got more time than almost all districts have.
I have a question, can we back it up even to before the board meeting?
Sure.
So, let's say there's two board members that want to propose a change in amendment to a policy or discuss a new policy. How do those two board members get it on the agenda so that everybody is aware and board members can prepare to have that discussion?
Yeah, I, you know, I, that's one of those to say, hey, I'd like to have a conversation. I mean, that could be a conversation, I want to talk about this. Certainly want to talk about having, because, because here's what happens, right? If, there's a lot to a policy, right, you've got multiple readings, like, there's multiple reasons for that, right? It's gotta be written, is it Neola, because you have that, is it, what's the language it needs to be there, why does the language need to be written in such a way? So knowing that that's a question, but it also comes to, let's say that there's a policy there that, that, you know, you're not voting for, right? And what happens if it's gonna be a four-one, a three-two, or two-three the opposite direction, right? We don't want to go to a board meeting and surprise, like, this policy got voted down. Right, because I think probably most time the superintendent's gonna want to pull that just to see if we can find some more commonality, you know, what, what, what's really the issue that we're going? And then, you know, if, depends on what happens, you know, three-two passes. You know, a three-two passes, it passes, right? But being, everybody well, well aware to have some dialogue about that is healthy.
I'm talking about more of like a new policy or a new amendment to a policy. So like, are we, let's say, if there's like for the cell phone policy, you know, Rose and I had discussed some of that and then she brought it up under new business, but should it have been, like, going forward, if two board members have an idea that they want to propose or something they want to talk about, should they contact Craig and say, hey, can we get this on the agenda for discussion under new business first and see what the discussion happens at the table?
I think I saw that in the policy.
And
That's the tricky, that's the tricky part.
Yeah, that's one of the tricky things as far as the, you know, with the policy piece goes. You know, if we had a, an opportunity to, to get that ahead of time where I can include that in a board update, because, and, and I've been very careful within those updates to not be specific. I've been summarizing things, or if there's, hey, here's a, a policy discussion that we're gonna have, here's the entire policy, here's the, the language in our handbooks. You know, I'm highlighting some key things that, you know, I've heard from the conversations from, from different board members, not being specific with who they are. You know, that's gonna be something that we're gonna need to talk about and then, you know, one of the other things that we've been kind of playing with a little bit too is, do we, do we include items under unfinished business and new business on the agenda? Because in the past, really, they've just been blank and, you know, we get to, yeah, we get to unfinished business, hey, is there anything we didn't didn't finish up and we move on without actually having that specific topic in there.
And I know we did seek legal counsel and Bill did send out something, just kind of stating that we should have those discussions at the table in the public.
But you want to give somebody heads up to say, that might be, again, your policy here, the regular board meeting one under A, it's shall be the responsibility of superintendent and treasurer CFO in cooperation with the board president to prepare an agenda of the items of business to come before the board of each meeting. So if there is something, that's probably a conversation with your board president.
But if you already talked with one other board member, then you, you know what I'm saying, how can you?
No, that, no, I, I don't think that's a violation, because you're not voting on anything, you're just saying, hey, we want to have a conversation about this. You're not taking any action, you're just getting
So you can just say, hey, can you place this on the, you would like this on the agenda?
First, again, people do it differently. I would first certainly have a conversation with, with the two folks here, because they'll end up having a conversation, how does it get on the agenda? Then what does it look like, where does it get put on the agenda as a new business? Because you do need to have some conversations, right?
Right.
So it's fair to have that conversation, so it's probably, where do you put it? Now, you have a new business or new
Yeah, we have unfinished business and we have new business.
So it's probably end up going under there, so people, again, have a heads up, this is gonna be on, on the topic, right? And every, all five board members should know, we're gonna have a conversation about this.
And we established the protocol last year that topics would be placed, if brought to the attention of the superintendent or myself on the Friday before the agenda went out, that they'd be placed on new business or unfinished business, so.
So the Friday before the Tuesday?
No, the Friday after, by the, because we do Tuesdays the initial review, Friday is the final, uh, agenda is getting ready to be sent out Friday afternoon for Tuesday's meeting.
So it's gotta be done by that Friday?
Yeah.
Before the Tuesday meeting?
Correct. So that way everybody has, when they get it Friday at 5:00 PM, typically they'd have Saturday, Sunday, Monday to prepare for said topic, to have the discussion at the board meeting, so no one's surprised when it's there.
So two things I, I want to bring up, one is that I was recently at the OSBA training, where we learned a lot of what we talked about today, but in addition, you know, one of the attendees brought up that at their board meetings, they will reserve new business for suggestions for future agenda topics, for future topics for discussion. I love that idea because it gives somebody plenty of time to do some research, that digging, that is going to, maybe some data collection from the district. All of that, that's going to help inform a, a discussion and help board members make informed decisions when it's time to vote. I, I don't find personally 72 hours as a person who has a family and a job, et cetera, et cetera. That's not a lot of time for me to do the kind of work that I feel is warranted in a, in a discussion and a vote, especially when it comes to policy.
So another district that we talked about this, they said, well, something that might be a future agenda item, they wanted to have in the Friday memo. That there was something that somebody brought up that they would want to potentially talk about down the road. They, they were saying, well, we're gonna ask the superintendent to put it on the Friday memo, which is something for future conversations, so everybody gets a head of it up. That's how they're gonna do it.
And that can be done really at any of the weeks between the meetings too.
Yeah, my question
Since we send that out every Friday.
Would be if, let's say, the board meeting's in three weeks and there's a board member that says, hey Craig, you know, I would like to have this discussion at the next board meeting. He puts it in the Friday agenda and let's say there's, you know, or this is a Friday, um, board update.
Update, yes.
And then let's say there's, you know, two different sides are butting heads. So what happens with that, like, can we still have then the discussion at the table or it would be, you know what I'm saying? Like, if there's not enough support
I think, again, remember policies, they take multiple readings, right? So you have some dialogue about it. Dialogue ought to be professional, right?
Sure.
You know, I think you come with, with the data and the facts that you have.
Yeah.
Because we want to make decisions based on what we have, because we know motion trumps logic, right? So we don't want to, you know, go off and, and say this is all gonna be, you know, the world's coming to an end, but how do we, how do we, what, what are the good planned arguments, I think it's part of the dialogue that's healthy, is to seeing everybody's points of view. Now, once you say everybody's points of view, when it comes time to, to do something with the policy, then you're, you're gonna vote, right? It's gonna go one way or another. But I think what I'm hearing is saying is that it can go a couple different ways. Maybe it's the longer you have, you'd like to have, the longer you have, you know, in the docket for somebody to do some research is probably better, which would put it in a Friday memo versus, I'm gonna put it on the agenda on Friday so for the meeting on Tuesday, which is probably a little bit better if there's a hot item, because everybody needs to be prepared for what side you're, you're, you know, because you, again, you gotta hear everybody's point of view, agree, disagree, whatever. You're gonna make the decision based on what's right for kids, right, ultimately.
You know, one of the things I think is helpful, anytime that we're going to be working with policy, because policy has a lot of power to it, you know, it, is the overarching rules by which we operate. So I'm gonna make up a topic so nobody thinks I've been proposing this, but let's say, I wanted it, myself, wanted a change on the indoor recess policy. I don't want the kids staying in, if it's raining, they should bring an umbrella and go outside. So if I just say, I want to reconsider our policy on indoor recess for our elementary students, but I don't say anything where I want them to never go outside or always go outside. So if I could offer along with my proposal, some information about what I would like to see changed or added or deleted and then maybe if I'm reaching out either to our board president or more likely our superintendent or CFO, depending on what it is, and then that person can gather maybe what I'm hoping for and maybe what the counter argument is.
Well, there's also probably gonna have to be legal that gets involved, right? Because it's a policy, you have to make sure it's legal.
Correct.
So, again, when you change things, again, this is one of those things, sometimes change takes time, right? You'd like to be able to just change it overnight, but if you don't write it the right way, you open yourself, you have to protect the district, right? So, so that's another reason to say, let's, let's start the conversation earlier and not just have it three days from now or four days from now, we're gonna have the meeting. So my hearing, we're gonna, so if there's something that you want to have, new topic or item, whatever, we're gonna call Craig or Bill and just say, hey, I'd like to have something, I'd like to have a conversation about this in an upcoming meeting. You have plenty of time, so everybody, and then that goes out in the memo saying, hey, you know, Ginny wants to talk about, you know, indoor recess. It's a good, good one, because you're not supposed to be involved in that one.
Fresh air is good.
But then everybody can have the opportunity to kind of give the background.
And again, Lauren, to your point too, you know, even if that does come out on Friday, if, if it's a new topic, we would be putting that under the new business part of the agenda. And if there is some policy implication to that, that would be a first reading that's the following month. So that gives us that month to continue the conversation and research before we actually get to that first reading and we can have comment on the first reading, correct?
Yeah, there's a couple thoughts here though too, right? Like, if Ginny is passionate about indoor recess and she wants to put that on new business to share with the entire board, this is what I'm passionate about and this is why I feel the way that I do. The initial discussion can happen at the meeting for those who are ready. Nothing should probably be voted on unless there's consensus, right? So unless the topic is so one-sided that there's consensus at the table, you wouldn't be voting on anything anyways. I mean, I don't know why as a board, we would put things on to vote specifically at a said meeting to rush it if we can't build consensus.
Only because I think I would like to be informed about
Correct, but, but that being said, that the initial discussion doesn't mean that you're going to vote on it. Because consensus, so it would come back, so the discussion would start and to, to Russ's point, sometimes these things take time because there's not agreement or there is agreement, but we want to make sure the word shall or may or whatever, you know, we've had those discussions about things that are simple that take time that have to review, then it's gonna be under old business or whatever, you know, to come back up at a future meeting. Until the board, someone makes a motion to move it to an agenda item or the board motions to table it until some later date. That's when we started getting into the Robert rules and pieces like that. I think the whole discussion that we've had last year previously as a board was that nothing would be brought up without it being on the agenda, so there's no surprise. If people aren't ready, and again, I would find it hard to believe that anything that would come up the very first time would be on for a vote. And if it's policy, it's got, like, to Russ's point too, it's gonna take two reads anyways. And you're not likely, unless there's consensus, to be able to put it up for a first reading at the next meeting unless you can get the consensus that day and it might be something that's just so blatantly obvious that, wow, we really didn't look at it that from a perspective. Like, we've had those discussions with policies as we start to look into them for appointments or whatever it might have been, right? Like, there may be things that we can get the consensus quickly, there's other things that are so benign, like indoor recess, that we might want to, like, spend some time on it and really work it and figure out what that might be. And other things may not be topics that the board should be even be involved in, because they're administrative.
Right, she might bring up indoor recess and we might all say
Say metaphor topics.
Yes, this is not a policy thing, this is an administrative.
Right.
Well, the real piece is, you're on the board, right? You do represent more than just you, right? You have people, so you do need to have dialogue. Getting everybody to agree on something, so that could take some, some time, but you, so you want to have time to build consensus. You need to have time to listen to people's points of view, and that's healthy. But there will come a time when there's gonna have to be a vote and the vote is what it is, and then that goes to the hardest lessons, right? Sometimes you gotta live with what the vote is going to be. But we want to make sure that everybody can present the facts, again, go back to, what's the reason why I want to bring this? What's the data, what's my solution, how would I like to see it, what's your idea? Because maybe, you know, maybe there's, you know, more things that we can put into that that we're gonna learn, so that's healthy, so.
Can I interject, because I feel like, and I'm a big girl, I feel like we're talking about the cell phone policy that we brought up and nobody, and we don't use examples. So this conversation would have been good before my first meeting. And I would have said, hey, I'm gonna, heads up, I'm gonna bring this up in new business, this is what I'm passionate about. So just, in, so in the future, and, and because as a, as a person sitting out there looking at the agenda, it was always blank for new business. So it was in my understanding that you guys, many board members can just bring up whatever.
I think that's fair though, but that's why I said, when I sent out the email that I sent, you guys wouldn't have known that, like, and as a reminder.
You kind of needed this.
Correct, yeah, exactly, so that's why.
You're off of your sins.
But, I mean, because that's not something I would have, I would have brought that up and said, hey, heads up, this is what I, you know, bring up, so I thought it was
We have one here, we can get on the board, you don't know all the answers, right? It's a lot to learn. You're right, it would be good to have this, but sometimes you gotta go through a couple if I actually understand. So, and I will tell you, nobody's perfect, right? So you might step in at different times, but the good thing is you're having a conversation today, how we want to go, so that we don't get into, well, this is how we should do it. Now we talked about how we want to do it so that we're an efficient group to handle these things. I think you came up with a real good solution, time, because we need to build consensus.
What is the solution though? So if I could, I could have been hindsight, said, Maggie, this is what I'm, I'm gonna bring up for new business. Would then that, that have gone and been prepared and put on the agenda for the following meeting?
Well, what we want to try to do, I think
So we could have a discussion?
What I heard is, that's one way, what we heard is, we'd like to be able to have a little bit of time for everybody to know that it's gonna be on the agenda to potentially do their due diligence, so if you could do it
Right, so if I had gone to her before the last meeting?
Two to three weeks before the board meeting, say, I'd like to bring this up, that gives everybody some time to, for him to, to share it out with everyone, this is gonna be on the board agenda. Please bring your thoughts, we're gonna have a conversation. this is gonna be on the board agenda, please bring your thoughts, we're gonna have a conversation under new business, right?
So you're saying go to, so in that situation, it would have been, go to Craig, he can put it in his board update to give everybody a heads up, and then it would be on, everybody would know that it would be on the agenda under new business for discussion.
Under new business for discussion.
Yeah, that's financially you come to me.
So, and, and again, that's fine, you want to go right to superintendent, some go to the board president, you know, some don't, but whatever your norm is here, that's fine. So everybody knows.
Getting something on the agenda isn't something that I have, as long as that board member knows there's one other member that is on board, I don't have to worry that it's not gonna get up, put up for discussion. That's all, that was my, because that was my whole thing, is I wanted to be able to talk about it at the table.
So what you're saying is you just don't want to, you want to be able to have a conversation?
No, yeah, right, yeah.
I mean, I think that's, you know, I think that's, you know, fair to have a conversation. I mean, that's, you know, you have to hear different points of view. Again, everybody has to understand, may or may not go, whosoever may that is. But I think what I'm hearing is give people long enough time to at least digest what it is. Maybe there's information that Craig or Bill might have to send out to you, because you might not know some of the ins and outs of things too, so, you know, there's that piece of parts. But, you know, I'm, I'm not the board here, but that's a suggestion.
So how would you guys, like, because here's what I, how I pictured it, that meeting, is getting, yes, you weren't gonna come prepared for specifically, but getting feedback, you know, oh, I, I think this about that, cell phones, I think, I think this is not worth, so that then we can leave, go, you know, get our information that we ended up then emailing to you and have time. So if we're all in, if we all agree on one portion of that, then we don't have to focus on doing that in our research, because, like you said, we're all very busy. So that was my goal, what I, what I, why I want, what I wanted to do at that meeting is just see people's instinct on it, and what you were, you know, what information I needed to then go and research on. So in the future, we, you'd have a heads up, you know that was coming, you wouldn't necessarily know my angle, right? Like, because I can't get too specific unless you're the board, the one board member end up I want to go to, correct?
I, I could be mistaken, but one of the things that I believe I understood over time is, if it's directly informational, not a discussion. So let's say my indoor recess, I want to see that students have a minimum of this many hours of outdoor recess over this period of time, and I might, I might have read something about that, or I might have a proposal that I want to do this in the spring and the fall, but not the winter, however, so that there's a little bit of information kind of going into the mixer. And if I would, let's say I'm sharing that with Craig, then he'd also have convenient opportunity to talk to our legal, because you meet them weekly, yes, yes. So it's not an additional meeting with the attorney to, because there's a cost to that. So in the regular meeting, let's say, one of our board members brought up some concerns, and I had, these are the couple of questions I have, or what do you think? Then that whole proposal might go to Craig two weeks before the next board meeting, three weeks before the next board meeting, so that he might even tell me, you know, this is really an administrative function, you're interested and concerned about that, let me work with the admin team and we'll discuss it, and it won't be a policy change, or maybe he'll say, wow, we really do need a policy on that, whatever it might be. But I think the timeframe, the no surprises, the no additional cost, and the opportunity for us to respond in the most productive and insightful way that we can, because you might be absolutely right, that once you've made a specific recommendation, what you'd like to see happen, maybe we'd have consensus, and then we could go right to drafting a policy change, or if there's a lot of questions, maybe we need a survey, a focus group or something to expand on that. So that's at least, when, when I've had anything that I wanted to talk about at a meeting, whether it was new business, usually it would be new business or something like that, I would have told, whether it was Craig or a previous superintendent, I want to talk about this item, you know, or ask a question about that at the meeting to let you know I wanted to ask that question.
So now we're gonna do that, but we're gonna, he's gonna go, it's gonna come on the Friday memo.
Right.
We want to give, give some time, so everybody knows that it's gonna be discussed at the board meeting, give everybody time to do it in a sequential way.
Sure.
Does that sound like a reasonable?
Board update and then the, it'll be on our new business, and we're actually gonna, it'll be like written now.
Okay, I'm looking at the time.
Yeah, because we've got about ten minutes left. The other piece would be if we talked about something at the last meeting under new business, you know, if we're going to unfinished business, we'll actually include those topics in that area as well.
Folks, I have a lot of different scenarios, but this is the kind of the piece, when you say, you know, getting on the board, how do you handle things? That's kind of what I think is helpful. Hopefully you feel it's helpful to talk through, so everybody kind of hits on the same page, so that we can be helpful all. So I stole something from North Royalton that I think is really good, and it's the last page here, it's actually a new page, but here's what, they have a handbook, okay? You can get on their, North Royalton's website, their board docs, and they have a handbook. And maybe for new board members, as you're saying now, there's some things I would know. So this is one of the things, when I did their retreat, actually, we kind of walked through these governing rules and some of the stuff that was in this. But, but you might want to take a look, maybe that's something, Craig, you can, or Bill, you can kind of maybe pass out, it might be something, it might not be, it kind of has strategic plan in there, it has, you know, what I like too about it, it has, they put their board goals in there. This page here, which I really like, is the governing rules, which I'll get to in just a minute. But it also spells out, again, some of the things you talked about, like the board superintendent relationship, trainings, board member compensation, professional development, board treasurer relationship, there's some things that are really good in there, executive session, just might be something you want to consider. I stole it from them.
Did you say they passed that out at board meetings?
No.
Okay.
I did a retreat with them, and this was kind of like part of the, you know, so like when we, the board governing roles, you know, everybody kind of goes through, we're okay with these, because this has kind of been in their handbook.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think they passed that as a policy, it's their handbook. But this is actually page ten in there, and like, number one is no surprises, no not surprise our board members or administrators in any public meeting, but bringing up issues or questioning any other matters without prior notification, a minimum, now this is seventy-two hours, but we kind of talked about, again, because a decision might be something that's, you know, it might be something quick, right? You could call up and say, I have a question about that, then the board meeting comes and you can answer, and it's something quick like that. But if there's something that's more in-depth, again, let's go through that, let's get, let's give the ample time, so everybody gets the information. Communication, we've kind of started handling some of that, right? We talked about today, because I think if you have, we should have talked about your norms of operation or how you want to communicate, because communication really is about ninety percent of this, right? How do we do this? How do we want to make sure that we stay in our lanes as board members and administrators? But how do we communicate through all? That's important, the trust and respect each other. There's, again, they talked a little bit about there, and you can see the reference to North Royal there, because it's just copy and paste it out of theirs. Act as a team of seven. This really is a team of seven. Sometimes we think it's five, it really is five board members. But this table right here is really a group of seven that you gotta work together, right? It's really, you can't do this without each other. And thinking about it that way, and again, with the bottom line is also, what's our lens going to be, kids, right? How, where do we want to go? But how do we act as a team of seven? And then understand the role of the board and the administration. This is, again, this is, this is kind of good, we commit ourselves to understanding the different roles of the board and the administration. The board operates mostly with defining what district will look like, what the goals of district will be, and what and who the leadership will be. And the administration operates mostly in the defining of the how, which are the processes and the direct district operations. It's clearly understood that occasionally an overlap of these basic rules and responsibilities will occur, in such cases, other rules will apply, such as no surprises, communication, trust and respect, connecting as teams, some kind of the catch on there. That's how they, again, new board members, they go through this, talk about this, what does it mean to them? Some boards actually have created other norms, they have a, you know, a sign that shows what board member's responsibilities, they talk about each month, what it means to them, there's all kinds of ways to institutionalize this, so people know. You know, I think it's important, because when you're at a board meeting, sometimes, again, when you're out in the public and you're asking a question, I'm gonna go to the communication part, like, you know, the board really responds, thank you, thank you for your input, and you don't typically have that back and forth respond, because again, there's a lot that goes behind it. Some people don't understand why that is. Some districts have actually gone and actually have written a statement now, that we won't engage in back-to-back conversation, because there is, could be a lot of reasons why. That's another one of those communication pieces we didn't get to today.
We've got that at the beginning of the meeting.
Do you have it? Okay, good. But these governing rules, I think, are pretty good, kind of take a look at it. It might be a starting point for you to kind of think about where you want to go as a board group, and maybe there want to be some institutionalized some things for people coming down the pike, you know, or when you're just getting on, what can you hand besides the binder of policies, right? Or going online or reading it. So hopefully, we got, we only got a bit today of doing things. I wish in, I wish in the past, I, I, this is a great school district, I get a chance to work with Craig quite a bit, and some of the principals, you're in good hands, this is a great place to be, I do a lot of great things, as a tribute to everybody. So a team of seven here is gonna make it even more special for kids, because we don't know what the futures are gonna be, right? We have no idea, and the world is moving very fast, so you have to make sure we teach kids skills to be adaptable and problem solvers and all those things, right? Anything to wrap up? Can I, do they come up close? We got three minutes. So you can be in your car at six forty-five.
Good.
Awesome. Again, as a follow-up then, I, I know we want to talk some legal pieces to the puzzle as well, I think we, you know, we've got some good starting points here today too, just from a communication standpoint, but we'll make sure we follow up from the legal standpoint too, just to make sure we're all good. But thank you guys for the discussion.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Russ, thank you so much.
That was marvelous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Motion to adjourn, salute, second. Mr. Ray, please call the room.